All right, we're a little late, so if we can get this meeting to order. Everybody could find a seat and then... I'm waiting for my colleagues over here to stop talking. All right, you guys ready? Okay, if we can, please stand for the pledge. Need a chair for you? We doing Arbor Day first? Is December coming up for that? Okay, yeah, 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 we'll do it after this. We're gonna do the roll call after her. Yvette? You wanna do the roll call now or no?
Councilmember Hartman?
Here.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Here.
Councilmember Fisickelli?
Here.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Here.
Mayor McKay?
Okay. Could I ask you to read the proclamation, please?
This is a proclamation for celebrating Arbor Day in Southwest Ranches. Whereas in 1872 Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day is now observed through the nation and the world as... And whereas, in accordance with the policies and goals of the Town of Southwest Ranches Comprehensive Plan adopted May 8th, 2003, the town set forth measurable objectives for the protection and enhancement of critical ecological systems integral to South Florida's and the town's natural environment, including the maintenance and improvement of air quality by increasing tree coverage in the town and by meeting the standards to become recognized by the National Arbor Day Foundation as a Tree City USA. And whereas on December 20th, 2007, Southwest Ranches was recognized as a Tree City USA. And whereas, Southwest Ranches has continued to meet all standards and requirements for continuing designation as Tree City USA and will be recognized in 2019 for its 13th consecutive year. And whereas, annual celebration of Arbor Day provides direction for management of the town's tree resources, encourages public education about tree care, and promotes a sense of pride in the community. And whereas, trees reduce the erosion of topsoil, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas, trees in our town increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. Now therefore, the mayor and town council do hereby proclaim that annually the 3rd Friday in January shall be recognized as Arbor Day in the Town of Southwest Ranches. Further, the council urges all citizens to celebrate National Arbor Day annually on the last Friday in April to support efforts to protect our tree resources and to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Dated this 25th day of April 2019, Doug McKay, Mayor.
Awesome, thank you. December, the floor is yours, dear.
I would just like to say thank you very much for this proclamation, and I would like to invite anyone who's available tomorrow at noon to come to Town Hall, have a little bit of lunch. We're gonna plant a Simpson Stopper tree in the parking lot, and we'll talk about the right ways of planting and the benefits of this particular kind of tree for its particular location. And I'd really love to see a crowd here. I need some pictures for my newsletter, so come on out and have some lunch with us tomorrow here at Town Hall for National Arbor Day. And thank you very much.
Awesome. Here's the proclamation if I could give to you. Do you wanna stand up here behind her, in front of her?
Yeah. I wanna be with her.
All right, let's go down in front.
Testing, testing, one, two, three.
All right, Keith?
Yeah, Mayor, Council, good evening. The next items on the agenda, four, five, six, seven, eight, are deemed to be quasi-judicial in nature. For those of the public who don't really understand what that means, most of the time the council acts in its role as legislators, making policy decisions and for the town and how the town conducts business and its affairs. Sometimes you act as a governing board to make a determination whether or not an application meets the requirements of law, and in that case you are the trier of fact or judges of the items that come before you. When this occurs, it's deemed to be quasi-judicial in nature. The applicant needs to prove by competent substantial evidence that they have met the requirements of the town code to be approved before you tonight. Under the town's charter, items four, five, six, seven, and eight require five affirmative votes of the council, which is another word unanimous vote. That means that if any one council member does not agree with or approve the item before you, the item is denied even if the motion appears to be more than three votes. So, at this time, what we will do is we will have... Yvette, I don't know who wants to... Yvette's gonna swear in anyone who wishes to speak on items four, five, six, seven, and eight. So, if you are desirous to speak on any of those items tonight, you need to have sworn testimony for it to be considered by the council. So she will ask you to speak, stand up, raise your right hand to be sworn in. So anyone wishing to speak on four, five, six, seven, or eight on the agenda needs to be sworn in at this time. If you don't stand and get sworn in, you can still speak, but the council can ignore you.
Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give us is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes. Thank you. So we will read in each item, and you can speak on each item at a time. We're gonna start with number four. So if you could please read the item into the record.
Yes, this is a site plan modification for New Horizon Church. A resolution and final order of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving application number SP-70-18 by New Horizon United Methodist Church, Inc. to amend its existing site plan to construct a mission building, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate the intent of this resolution and providing an effective date.
Thank you. In accordance with the Jennings Rule, has any town council member had any ex parte communication concerning this item?
Nope.
Okay, seeing none, is the applicant present? If so...
Yes.
Could you please come to the podium, state your name and address and that you've been sworn in and understand why you're here? Whoever is speaking on behalf of the applicant.
Excuse me. My name's John Gara with Square One Architecture.
And you've been sworn in?
Yes.
And you represent New Horizon Church?
Correct.
Thank you. At this point in time, we're gonna turn it over to Jeff Cadums to do a staff report, then back over to you. Okay, Jeff?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm going to summarize this application and the staff report. And... What do I need to do here? There we go. Okay. Okay, the request from New Horizon is to construct a, what they're calling a mission building, which is administrative offices, a conference room, and sort of a group instruction kind of space, which Mr. Gara can explain better. And it also includes some storage for the church. Essentially, it's an office function and a conference center. The building would be 4,708 square feet with a 3,500-square-foot ground floor and a 1,218-square-foot partial second floor. This building replaces a 1,200-square-foot modular church office that was removed in 2016. The building, the proposed building is on the screen, so you can see what it looks like. You can see the partial second story. You can see that the, it's gonna have a blue standing seam metal roof that will be in harmony with the other types of structured roofs we have. If you look at the property, it's, the New Horizon property is about 15 acres. There are two five-acre parcels fronting Flamingo and another five-acre parcel to the rear. The, only one of those parcels is actually developed, and that's the lower right. And the proposed building is going to be located on that site. Here's a close-up of the site, and here's where the building is proposed. So you can see the footprint of the building, a proposed deck on the, to the north there, and a drop-off, a drop-off lane with a portico share that's proposed. As well, I want to point out that 58th Street runs through the southern portion of this property. 58th Street is sort of an anomaly. There's an access road, which you can see on the right-hand side. That access road goes from the New Horizon property up through St. Mark's Church and the Catholic High School. And it connects to Griffin Road, Flamingo Road, and I believe three different places. The purpose is to take some of the trips off Flamingo and concentrate them at the existing driveways. But this accessway also serves as the only access to two residential properties. And that's one property that is served by 58th, and that's the other. 58th Street is not a right-of-way. We don't know of any recorded easement. It's just there. We want to make sure that those two residences always have access in the future. And so one of the recommendations is gonna be for a grant of access to those two properties. The proposed building complies with all the site development regulations. There is sufficient parking already in existence to accommodate the new building and its functions. There'll be additional landscaping installed, including some southern live oaks and a hedge between the parking lot and the Flamingo Road canal. And invasive trees, I believe they've already started removing them, and they will be removed prior to the issuance of a building permit. The property is also gonna come into compliance with the town's lighting code. And they've submitted photometric plans in accordance with that. So staff recommends approval of the application, subject to the removal of the invasive trees on the site prior to issuance of a building permit, and certification of actual lighting values by a qualified engineer in conformance with the photometric plan prior to a certificate of occupancy.
Jeff, is the third condition that...
And the... Yes, thank you.
The access?
The third condition is the access easement. This was something that we worked out after the publication of the staff report.
So, and that would be an access easement in a form approved by the town to grant access?
In a form approved by the town attorney to grant access to the two existing residential properties that currently gain access through the church property.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question about that one? That's the only one that you didn't name a timeframe on. So just...
That would be prior to the issuance of a building permit.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Right. Does the applicant have any questions of Jeff besides the one you just asked?
No.
Do you understand the staff report and agree with and stipulate to his conditions of approval?
Yes.
Okay. Does the town council have any questions of Jeff at this time?
I do. The lighting code, does it apply for the entire site or just that building?
It imply, it applies for the entire site.
Okay.
Is there gonna be any activities or anything that are gonna be held after hours? Or is this just for school hours?
This is not necessarily after hours, but more after, after the, sorry, the fellowship hall is used to move from one building to the other primarily. But, you know, there would be other functions, I guess, that would happen, you know, throughout the day.
But it's strictly through New Horizon. It's not gonna be like leased out or anything like that, would it be?
Let me have one of the owners come up.
Good evening, my name is Paul Panear. Do you need an address?
Yes, please, and if you've been sworn in.
I've been sworn in. 1497 Southwest 158th Avenue, Pembroke Pines, Florida. And I am the Chair of the Building Committee. It is a fellowship hall building, so we will have events until 7:00 or 8:00 or 9:00 in the evening. But it seats about 50 people, so it's relatively small scale. And we do not rent our facilities out. We have community events and people come. But part of this mission is really to serve outbound. We feed schoolchildren off-site, you know, in their schools. We take food to them, and we need places to launch those things, and that's the name "mission." Mission is to go out from our property to wherever the project is.
Any other questions of town council?
Yeah, just a couple. Thank you for your service to the community, very commendable cause. Jeff, when I look at the site plan, I realize there's, what, three plots that are roughly five acres apiece?
Yes.
And this plot is being developed really independently of the other two?
Correct.
So they're not all on the same site plan based on what I'm seeing here?
Right.
It looks to me like this site is pretty much built out. They, if we approve this, there doesn't appear to be much room left for additional development on that plot. Is that accurate?
It's certainly getting close. Yes, getting close to build-out.
Okay, okay. That's my questions, thank you.
Any other members of the town council have any questions?
Yeah, I have one other question. Aside from being in church and doing the other community stuff you're doing, are you gonna be running a school there?
We currently have a preschool in the back building that will be behind this structure, and it has an enrollment of less than 100 students, but it has been in business for years and years, and it will not really be part of this project. It has their own facility.
All right, so it won't be expanding because of this building?
No, it's not a, it's not an elementary school, and nothing is expanding in our education.
Okay, I don't have any additional...
All right, do you have a full presentation?
No, I just wanted to ask questions, and I don't really have a prepared speech, no.
Please, does the architect have a prepared speech?
No, I'm here to answer questions.
Okay. So at this time, we're gonna open up to the public. Any member of the public who wishes to speak on this item, please stand up, state your name and address, and if you've been sworn in.
David Kazenski, 6411 Hollaty Trail. I just have a couple of inquiries. One of them really wouldn't matter and have to do with any equestrian activities. Doesn't look like the property's gonna be affected with that. But the other concern that I have, if any of the nearby property owners have expressed an opinion, either yea or nay, to this. That's basically my only concern. I haven't heard from any of the neighbors, and I think that's very important.
Mary Gate Chapels, 5901 Southwest 160th Avenue. I was sworn in. These people have been there as long as I can remember, and they've been very good neighbors. And this building is not going to impact the area at all. It basically is offices with a meeting room on it, and I don't see how anybody could object to it. And we're certainly blessed with all of our churches.
Any other member of the public? Seeing none? Lori, are you speaking or no? Sure, just state your name and address, and if you've been sworn in.
Lori Parrish, 12801 Luray Road, Southwest Ranches. I don't have a concern, in fact, I go to your craft fair all the time, I love it. But one of the concerns I have as a resident is that, and this doesn't seem to going to increase in more traffic, but I don't know how many of you have tried to drive home on Flamingo Road about 2:30 to 3:30 in the afternoon. But the schools have blocked off almost the entire right lane, and sometimes they come over again, and they've got cones, they've got private security, they've got police officers, you know, off-duty detail officers. But the only thing I have as a concern, and Little Church has been there, and they've done great things, and they all do. But my concern is if we expand much more, those people, you won't be able to travel on Flamingo Road from Griffin to Sterling, except in the far-left-hand southbound lane if it gets any worse. I'm sure all of you have seen it on a school day, which a school day is worse than Sunday, and Sunday's pretty crowded. So that's the only thing I ask you to keep in mind. It doesn't relate to this issue, but like all of the facilities, both public and private, going down Flamingo, if they block anymore, I mean, and they're blocking at potential, they're blocking got canopies to keep the police officers from being hot. I mean, they're blocking turning lanes, they're doing every... Did any of you ever see it? That's the only thing I ask you to keep in mind, is you just sort of think about if anything were to expand too much, that would have a more negative impact in just traveling along Flamingo. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, public session closed. Jeff, do you have any concluding remarks?
I have nothing to add.
Applicant, if you could come to the podium. Do you have any concluding remarks?
No, just since this discussion just came up as part of our discussion, this last woman that came up, I just would reiterate that we're not expanding the fellowship hall. This is something for mission purpose, not...
The three things that came up that you all stated, and I just want to make sure I got them right, to add them as conditions of approval to get them in the resolution, that you're not gonna rent the place out, that's correct? Okay, and you agreed to that? It's not gonna be utilized for a school?
Correct.
Correct? And the third one was all feeding activities will occur off-site?
That's right. We would do fellowship internally, but it's not food for...
Okay, perfect. So Jeff, if we could add those as conditions or agree to, turn it over to the council for comment, motion, et cetera.
Should we put a stipulation in that they keep the pumpkin patch in perpetuity? I brought my kids there since they were born. Again, thank you.
Looking for a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion to approve with the conditions that were stated.
I second it.
Okay, any additional questions, comments?
Just one other comment. Jeff, we did a mailing to the affected residents with, within whatever the required linear feet from the property lines are?
Yeah, we did a, we did a notice within 1,500 feet, and we didn't get contacted by anybody on this.
No contact, okay. So hopefully, David, that helps you sleep a little better at night. Thank you, Doug.
No problem. All right, call the question, please.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisickelli?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Item five, Yvette, if you could please read it into the record?
Yes, this is a site plan modification for the Seek Society of Florida, Inc. A resolution and final order of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving application number SP-71-18 by the Seek Society of Florida, Inc. to amend its existing site plan to add an additional 2,287 square feet of building area to the existing facility, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate the intent of this resolution and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Has there been any ex parte communications concerning this matter?
No.
Nope. Seeing none, is the applicant present? If you could please come to the podium, state your name and address and that you've been sworn in, and that you understand why you're here.
Is it my home address or the town's address?
Your home address, that's fine.
My name is Manmeet Gulati, and I live at 45 Gleason Street in Delray Beach, and I have been sworn in.
And you know why you're here tonight?
Yes.
Great. We're gonna turn it over to staff and then back to you. Jeff?
Okay, thank you. The Seek Society is requesting modification to its site plan for a one-story, 2,287-square-foot addition at the northwest portion of the facility in the grassed area between the existing building and the parking lot. And I'll show you the location. That's the site location outlined in red, the southwest corner of Sterling and 160th. This is the existing developed property. And that's the location of the main addition and a portico share. The initial concept, according to the application, entailed walling off two open sides of the breezeway that, to create a single entrance. Right now, there are actually separate buildings, and there's sort of a covered courtyard that runs between them. Therefore, there are multiple entrances into the different buildings, and it's a bit of a security concern for the congregation. So the initial concept was to wall off the two open sides of the breezeway to create a single entrance to address security concerns about the large number of outside entrances into the facility. The concept evolved into a roofed addition that consolidates egress and ingress to the facility into a single entrance from the north side of the building while creating a multimedia conference center or conference room, some small study rooms, and an additional restroom. This is the front of the building looking south from Sterling Road. And this shows you the location of the proposed improvements. My apologies to the architect. It's gonna look nicer than that, but hey, good enough for government work. Okay. This is the front elevation of the building. On the right, on the top, elevation view, on the right is the addition. On the bottom is the floor plan, and it's, north is up, south is down. So Sterling Road would be to the, on the bottom there. And you can see the portico share and the shaded area is the addition. The central area is the multimedia and conference area, and then the individual smaller rooms surrounding it are the study rooms. The existing parking facility is not large enough to add any additional concurrent demand. So the applicant has agreed that the addition will only be used when the assembly areas, the worship areas are not being used, so that we don't have increased parking. And that will be subject to an enforceable agreement. The building and improvement complies with all of our code requirements. We've got SBDD approval, the town engineer have approved it as well for drainage, and the fire marshal has also concurred. The conditions of approval that we're recommending are, number one, execute a unity of title agreement in a form acceptable to the town attorney that unifies the title of the developed 1.67-acre parcel and the undeveloped 0.73-acre parcel. And that is... Well, it's, it's south along Dykes, not showing up separately. The reason for this is that south parcel is necessary for drainage, for the main parcel. So it really needs to be tied together in title, so that they're not separated. Number two, execute a parking agreement in a form acceptable to the town attorney that prohibits the use of more than one assembly area at any one time. The agreement shall include provisions authorizing the town's right of inspection to confirm compliance with the agreement, enforcement, and recovery of attorney's fees in favor of the town. Number three, install an opaque white vinyl fence, five to six feet in height, behind the existing shrub line along the Dykes Road frontage of the undeveloped parcel. And that's outlined in blue. So it would be along Dykes and the street to the south, we'd wrap around the corner. Number four, restore the shrubs, so as to create an opaque screen and plant live oaks behind the fence 30 feet on center. Continue this landscape treatment along Southwest 61st Court. This condition first requires that the petitioners submit building and landscape plans to the town and obtains all required approvals and permits. There is a fence currently along, a white vinyl fence currently along 61st Court. So that would wrap around along Dykes and the landscaping treatment. that would wrap around along Dykes, and the landscaping treatment would be on both sides. And finally, to comply with some technical corrections to the site plan documents pursuant to our memorandum on file. That concludes our recommendations.
Thank you. Does the applicant have any questions of Jeff at this time? If you could stay in the microphone, just because it's recorded.
No, we don't.
Thank you. Does the applicant agree with his conditions of approval?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Does anyone on the Town Council have any questions of Jeff at this time?
I do. The, where that blue line was, the difference in the right-of-way, in front of the temple, the right-of-way is a different width. Is that just not corrected with Broward County? Let me, I'll get up and point out what I'm talking about.
This is wide here, and this is not, this is like...
Two different sets, bud.
I'm wondering if that's town right-of-way also, or is that not corrected on the map? Or what is that additional?
There is, there is an ingress-egress easement over that. So the shrub line and the fence line would line up with the ultimate right-of-way line, inclusive of that easement.
Okay. Go ahead.
No, I'm good for now.
No, I have a question. Jeff, where would the, where would the new fence go? Is it the blue line?
Yes.
Okay. This might sound like splitting here, but I don't understand it. Why are we saying five or six foot? Why don't we just say six foot?
At the pleasure of the council.
Okay.
If I may say something, we already have a fence on the south side. So we have one on the line there and on the west.
Do you know if it's five feet or six feet?
It is five feet, it's the regular vinyl fence. I believe it's five feet.
I think it's a five-foot fence.
Okay, sorry.
Narinder Jali, 13924 Southwest, 107th Court, Miami. I'm one of the oldest members of the Sikh Society here.
I'm sorry, sir, you've been sworn in?
Yes.
Perfect.
Yes, yes, sir. And I believe the existing fence that we installed a couple of years, plastic fence, it's a six-foot high.
Six-foot vinyl.
Yeah, so let's keep it at six-foot.
Six-foot. Any other member of the Town Council have any questions? I've got a couple. Jeff, about four years ago, the residents that are directly, I guess it would be southeast of this property, had approached the town and South Broward Drainage District for some drainage improvements. We never reached agreement with them, because they were asking for some things that South Broward couldn't agree to. Part of the overall discussion was, I believe, some drainage capacity, not storage, but the beginning of a culvert that would come from the proposed parking lot here, underneath the road that goes back to those houses. I think it was then going to join up to, can't think of the name of the church that's right there, go into their pond, and keep feeding back ultimately to that lake. New Horizon? New, oh, it's New Hope, New Hope.
New Hope.
Yeah. Has South Broward seen these plans? Have they done any plan reviews on this?
Yes, South Broward reviewed it and approved.
Okay, so apparently that plan is probably dead then, otherwise they may have brought something up?
I'm aware that there were discussions in the past, and I know the applicant can address their willingness to participate in that plan at the time. But as of today, I haven't heard anything else about it, and South Broward has approved this site plan.
Yeah, the reason it was a challenge for the residents that live kind of downhill is Dykes Road would basically wash down that road, and, you know, the water coming off the road would flood their properties. You guys have, I'm sure, seen standing water down there over the years. But if South Broward is not interested in pursuing, then we have no reason. Yeah, yeah. So that's all I have, Jeff, thank you.
You got anything?
I don't have nothing for you, Jeff.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Does the applicant have any presentation it would like to make tonight?
No, we only want to say that we agree with the conditions that have been read by Jeff, so we affirm our compliance with that.
Thank you. Does any member of the public wish to speak on this item? If so, please state your name and address for the record, and if you've been sworn in.
Mary Gay Jables, 5901 Southwest, 160th Avenue. I'm directly across the street from them, and they've been good neighbors since I loaned them my water and my power. And my only concern was parking. And I really don't care if they have functions going in every room. I would just like to see that maybe they would agree to using the school property for parking, should they ever have an overflow. It's right directly across, actually catty-corner to them, and it has excessive parking there. That, to me, I mean, there's really no way of controlling whether or not they're using that room or not during their services. And so they can contain what they have at this point, but I would think that should they, in the future, need excessive parking, that they agree to use the stuff that's at the elementary school. And otherwise, I have no problem with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Gay. Anyone else?
Good evening, everybody. My name's Louis Gregory, 5501 Southwest, 160th Avenue.
Gregory, you've been sworn in.
Yes, sir, I've been sworn in. Thank you. Actually, I wanted to come up, because I wanted to take a moment to recognize the fact that the Sikh Society is being proactive in the security of their congregation, and I think this is a really important topic for us as a town, in the fact that so much is happening right now with active shooters in public schools and religious places. We just saw what happened on Easter. So I applaud you guys for doing that, and I hope that a lot of the other religious places in Southwest Ranches will take the time. As a federal, retired federal law enforcement officer trained in active shooter, I know that these small steps that you take to control the ingress and the egress of your facilities make a big difference, and I, for one, don't want to see anything bad happen to any of our neighbors, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please.
I'll need to be sworn in, please. Chris Brownlow, 5301 Southwest, 145th Ave.
Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, ma'am. I want to thank the Sikh Society, and I had not thanked our New Horizons neighbors. Both facilities have benefited the town. They have helped us with certification, the New Horizon, but recently, the Sikh Society not only gave for the veterans at the collection time at the holidays, but they opened up their run to the charity, and all of the proceeds went to our scholarship fund, and the scholarship fund received $10,000 toward the students this year. So they are showing that they are very active and giving residence to the community, as well as you, so I want to thank them for that.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, public session closed. Jeff, do you have any concluding comments?
None.
Does the applicant have any concluding comments? I have just one final question, the applicant, like I did the last one, so if you could come to the podium for whoever wants to address. It's, these questions are born out of what the council members speak about.
Sorry, no, we don't have any more comments.
Thank you. My final question is, Jeff, if you could go back to that one slide.
This one actually shows it.
Okay, yeah, but the other one...
Look at the blue line.
Yeah, it does. What the mayor spoke about is the fact that the property directly to the north has one contiguous block, and yours has a block with the line through it. And the reason why is the small area with the line through it was conveyed a different way than the line, the one without the line in it. One was conveyed in what's known as a right-of-way, the other was conveyed as what's known as an easement. They both do the same thing, you know, but the conveyance isn't as clean as it could be. So one question that I want to know is, if the town decides that it would rather it be one block like the property in the north, which would be just right-of-way, does the society have any issue fixing that conveyance?
Yeah, just to further clarify, whether it's right-of-way or easement, you still can't use it. It's a reservation, okay? The right-of-way is owned in fee simple by the town, the easement is owned in fee simple by the temple, but you still have the same restrictions, you can't use it, because it's reserved for ingress and egress only. So what the town attorney is requesting is, would you dedicate it, would you convey that to the town? You won't, well, you don't really pay taxes anyway, but it would become town property instead of your property, and as it is, you're proposing to put that fence and the hedge along that line that would separate that easement from the rest of your property, so there's really no point in maintaining it as an easement.
There's also, I was thinking more so of a Griffin 345 situation with liability for them.
Right.
So, that's what I was looking at. Meaning, I just want to make sure you all understand, and the public to understand, if a car veers off Dykes Road and gets into an accident and hits your fence, if it's an easement, you're liable; if it's a right-of-way, you're not liable. And so that's why it's a legal issue also, whether or not you'd want it actually considered an easement when it's sitting right outside your property lot, so...
If I, if I understand correctly, Jeff, according to the agreement that a couple of years ago you helped us negotiate in terms of using this lot that we have on the south side for drainage, we also use that for parking occasionally, overflow parking. And therefore, we would like to keep that option, so we are never going to park on the street.
This has nothing to do with that at all.
Okay.
This is literally, you see where the blue line is on the map?
Yes.
Okay, you see the white line to the right of it?
Right.
Exactly. The temple property that's developed on the north has dedicated 35, 40, whatever, whatever the dimension is, it's dedicated right-of-way. On that south lot, about half that, half that amount of right-of-way has been dedicated, and the other half has been encumbered by an easement for the, for the use of Dykes Road, for the ultimate expansion of Dykes Road, or drainage for Dykes Road. So the town attorney is asking if you would agree to just go ahead and dedicate that little strip between your fence and your hedge and the existing right-of-way for Dykes Road to the town. It'll have no material impact on the use of that property for you.
Move the line to the left. It cleans up a legal issue, and the mayor pointed it out, and I didn't know it before he pointed it out, so it's up to you all if you would like to stipulate to it, the town is requesting it.
Could we make a decision about it in the future, as we learn a little bit better what it means to us?
We can temporarily table your item, and you can go speak about it, and then we can bring it back, if you'd like.
If you want to defer the item, we'd much rather have you approve it today, and that way we can proceed with the development, because security is a big concern right now in our minds.
Okay.
And we would like to proceed with approval.
So if I may understand what you're saying?
If you could please speak in the mics.
If I may understand what you're saying is, when you talked about liability, if we give up this land to the city or to the town, then if somebody comes and hits our fence, it's not our fault anymore?
If they get into an accident in that area, you know, they can't sue you if they get into an accident in that area, because you don't own the property. What happened in HOA, and some of the members are here, Griffin 345, is they own their own roads, exactly like this. There was an accident with an ATV, and they got sued as a result, and each one of those homeowners had to pay...
A lot, a lot of money.
$15,000 each, because of their liability of the accident there. So that's why, when you look up there, most are dedicated as right-of-way, because people don't like owning roads, you know?
May I ask a question of Jeff?
Sure.
Does that mean that the fence along Dykes Road on that property would align with the fence in the upper part of her property? Is that what it is?
Yes.
I think we are okay with that.
Yes.
Yeah, we are okay with that.
All right. Seeing no further comment, there's no more further public comment either, it's closed. No, but it's closed, it's up to the mayor, if you want. No.
No, we don't have any more questions.
Mayor, from Legally, I'm turning it over to you, but if you want to address the resident you make.
No, I'm good. Go ahead, call the question.
Well, I don't think there's a motion.
Wait a minute. Before we make that motion, you know, I still would like to discuss and make sure that they would agree...
They did, they did.
They would agree to use the school parking lot for, if they have a large event?
Would be up to the school. Right.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we can't require...
Go ahead, come up and say something, if you'd like.
We can't grant permission.
Yeah, we don't have the authority to do that, but if they got permission from the school to use the parking lot, it's a non-issue. Okay. Go ahead.
If we dedicate the property that we just talked about it, would it be possible for you to give us permission to put at least a gate in that fence for emergency use? So, not an access road, but just...
Just another way to enter and exit that site.
Emergency.
No, only in emergency, because right now we have only one ingress and egress from Sterling Road.
So it'd be for emergency use?
The dedication would have no bearing on that.
Yeah, it makes no difference. I'll talk to you about that afterward, but this makes no difference.
That has no bearing to us at all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve with the stipulation of...
All the staff report and the additional dedication of the right-of-way in lieu of easement.
Yeah, what he said.
Second.
Second. Any additional questions or comments? All right, call the question, please.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisickelli?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Thank you. Item six.
This is a site plan reapproval for Terra Ranches, a resolution and final order of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, reapproving the expired Terra Ranches site plan, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate the intent of this resolution and providing an effective date therefore.
I apologize. Good evening. How are you?
Good evening.
If you could please state your name for the record, that you've been sworn in, and you represent the owner.
Yes, my name is Steve Weary, 200 East Broward Boulevard, Fort Lauderdale, Florida. I have been sworn in, and I represent the applicant, Terra Ranches Investments LLC.
Thank you, Steve. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Jeff, then back to the council, back to you.
Let me interject first. Steve Weary and I have had a conversation briefly today. I reached out to them, and so we talked about deed restriction or whatever, and that's the extent of it.
Thank you. Anyone else speak to Mr. Weary or any applicant, anyone else concerning them?
No. Weary left me a voicemail, but I didn't respond back to it, and I met him when I walked in here, just a handshake.
Anyone else?
I don't know him.
He's a very nice guy. Jeff?
Let me just add one thing, really quickly, and Jeff may not know this, but the intention of my client is to withdraw the second sort of companion item relating to the request to release the Declaration of Restrictive Covenants. And so I don't know if Jeff was planning to take both things at the same time, but you could probably dispense with the second thing, because we're going to withdraw that.
Thank you. Item seven's been withdrawn. Jeff, if you could please present the staff report for item six.
Okay. This site plan called Terra Ranches was approved by the council in 2013. It subsequently expired due to lack of development activity. The applicant today is here to get a new site plan approval for the same site plan. It's the same site plan without any material changes. That was approved in 2013. The property was also platted in 2013, it was a lot-specific plat showing the 11 lots that the site plan shows today, and a lake in between Sterling Road and the lots. This is, this access is 172nd, and it borders Sterling Road to the north. So being as, as it's the same site plan, we have generally the same recommendations for approval. There were numerous conditions placed on the first one. They've actually satisfied the majority of them, and I'll read you what's left today, plus one additional, one additional recommendation. One is that homeowners' association documents shall not restrict the keeping of horses or other animals, except as restricted by the code. Two, that the homeowners' association docs shall require that the homeowners' association maintain the bridle multi-purpose trail within the Sterling Road right-of-way. See, that the developer provide final homeowners' association documents to the town attorney for review and approval prior to the issuance of the first building permit. Four, that construction of any models with associated signage and parking shall be subject to council approval. Five, any construction trailer shall be subject to council approval. And one additional request by... And one additional request by Councilmember Jablonsky, that the applicant construct a left-turn lane on 172nd into the development, and I believe you said right-turn lane also. I'll ask Councilmember Jablonsky for clarification. Bella Acres, Bellaacre Estates has a left-turn lane. They don't, they've never constructed a right-turn lane.
Yeah, I was only referring to a left-turn.
Okay, so it was a left-turn lane. And that, those, those six conditions would be staff's recommendation.
Any member of the town council have any questions of staff at this time? Seeing none, would the applicant like to make a presentation?
Yes, please, a, a brief presentation. And I'd, I'd like to add that, you know, as far as what the, the staff report says in relation to the suggested conditions, we agree with all those conditions, except for the, the late one from Mr. Vice Mayor, with every bit of respect to you, sir. And we just learned about that, that condition today, but we have looked into it, and, you know, we've found that it's problematic. And what I'd like to do with, with the mayor's permission is, is pass around a, a few photocopies I made of the town's regulations, a couple provisions that I think are pertinent here, and also if it, if it's okay with the town attorney too.
I'm okay. Keith, that's all right?
Okay, great, thanks. So, what I'm passing around right now, or Mr. Muniz is passing around, are some of the towns and the counties' regulations that relate to the construction of turning lanes, specifically in, in locations where you've got drives connecting to Broward County trafficways' corridors. And Southwest 172nd is such a roadway. The, the drive that we have planned is, is governed by these regulations. And what I can do is just very briefly, you know, kinda take you through the, the concept of these regulations, and, and starting with the first page, which is, sort of has section 90-80 at the top, you'll see there's a bracketed provision there that says, "Access to trafficway corridor shall be designed pursuant to the county land development code provisions regulating same." So, what this says is that, you know, if the, if the town has its own provisions for turning lanes, the county's provisions apply. In this case, it doesn't matter a heck of a lot, because the county's provisions and the town's provisions are almost exactly identical, except for a reference to one of the sections in the, in the county code that refers to a specific section, which is in your packet, as, and as compared with the, the town's code that refers to the regulations in this article, which refers to the, the town's code. So, it continues, it says, "Shall be designed pursuant to county land development code provisions regulating same. All access to a trafficway and all driveways and streets within a trafficway corridor shall be approved by both the county engineering and county, or in the traffic engineering division of the town," or sorry, that's of the county, "and the town engineer." So, here we've got in the, in that first sentence, the word "shall," which is, is in, when you're interpreting provisions, code provisions such as this, it's, it's not a permissive kind of a word, it's a, it's a requirement. And so, this establishes, you know, the, the rules that really must govern this question. Page two reflects a similar kind of a concept. Page two, on the bottom, you'll see a bracketed section, which is section 90-90, and it says, "A site connected to a street at any point within a trafficway corridor such as this site shall," again, we see that word "shall," "meet the design criteria, requirements, and standards of section 5-195B, access to trafficway corridors of the county land development code, as may be amended from time to time." So, that's pretty clear, I think, based on my explanation of the prior provision. The third sort of set of pages here that's stapled and folded for you is that section 5-195B of the county's code. And what I've done is, is highlighted the section that relates to the, the provisions governing turn lanes, so that's 6A and 6B. I apologize for how small that is, because I can barely read that myself. But if you look on the next page, which is the, the city's code that I had mentioned is virtually identical, those, those words are a little bit bigger, so if you wanted to read them there, you can do that. But basically, each of these left-turn and right-turn lane requirement standards that are, are set out establish really three criteria, and they're alternative criteria, to be met if a turn lane.